Good evening, everyone. I am John Rowe, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia. And I call the June 23rd, 2020 meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And we'll start this meeting with a roll call. This will be a voice roll call. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle? Excuse me. Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Glover?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semus?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, in accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus pandemic, his executive order number 51, which he signed on March 12, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council. And due to the fact that the coronavirus pandemic, which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we are holding this meeting of the Portsmouth City Council by video conference on this, the 23rd day of June, 2020, without a quorum present in the city council chamber. And we're doing this in order to reduce the likely spread of the COVID-19 virus. And this is in keeping with City Council Resolution 2020-21. Each member of the city council is participating from their home or some other remote location. And I'm in the city council chamber. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. In fact, we have 100% attendance, do we not?
Yes, sir.
And this meeting, this virtual meeting is being livestreamed on Facebook. And at the conclusion of the meeting, it will be posted at the appropriate places at the city's website. In addition, Madam Clerk, we have been taking citizens' comments up until today. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Those comments have been transcribed verbatim. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
And they will become part of the minutes of this meeting, a verbatim transcription of all those comments. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
When we get into the agenda, I will ask you, item by item, if anybody made a comment, and if you would state their name and the nature of their comment, whether they're for or opposed. We'll do that and get to the discussion part of the items. With that, our first order of business is the approval of the minutes. And we have the minutes of a virtual city council meeting of June 9, 2020, and June 10, 2020, and June 11, 2020. Well, consider the approval of these three, the minutes of these three meetings with one motion. It's a motion to... Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded in discussion on the motion. This will be an oral voice vote. We'll do it by calling the roll. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please? If you're in favor of the... If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye. If you're opposed, nay. And now, Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. Our next item on the agenda are three presentations. The first is Water Sewer Utilities Long-Term Financial Plan. Dr. Patton?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. In February, Mrs. Erin Tremere, Director of Public Utilities, made a presentation at the City Council Retreat on the State of Public Utilities. During the presentation, Mrs. Tremere discussed the physical and financial conditions of the Department of Public Utilities, outlining the economic disparity that exists between long-term revenues, expenditures, and liabilities within the capital improvement program. In recognition of the financial situation, council adopted a 5% annual rate increase in both water and sanitary sewer as part of the FY 2018 budget. And in FY 2021, you supplement at this rate by an additional 4%. This evening, Mr. Ed Donahue of Next Gen Strategies will present two long-term financial plans deemed viable for the Department of Public Utilities. New Gen Strategies is a management consulting firm specializing in providing financial, strategic, stakeholder, and sustainability services to public and private sector utilities. Next Gen has worked with the Department of Public Utilities since 2017 to update previous rate studies. The information Next Gen provides this evening will depict the costs associated with sufficiently funding both the water and sanitary sewer systems, our divestiture of the sanitary sewer system with the sole focus on water infrastructure. Members of City Council, upon consideration of this information provided, I will come back in the next weeks to further discuss this matter with you and move forward on a plan which is outlined, that we can move forward in impacting public utilities in 2021 through 2040. The second presentation, Mr. Daniel Jones, the city's chief information officer, will report back on the Portsmouth Broadband Authority. And the third presentation, Mr. Bob Owen, Deputy City Manager, will present a brief overview of the city's regulatory programs regarding political signs. Mr. Donahue?
Mr. Donahue, you've got the floor. Dr. Patton, apparently we've got an audio problem.
We're checking right now, Mayor.
Mr. Donahue, can you hear us? Can you reply?
Mark Davis is now joining.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
I can.
All right. Thank you. I'm very sorry. I'm not sure what the glitch was because we were able to speak earlier when we tested this. Thank you very much. We will try to...
Sherry Capdewano is now joining.
Please indicate if you can't hear us. Make some gesture or something. But our purpose tonight is very simple, to present two scenarios for the updating of the long-term financial plan for the Department of Public Utilities. If we could go to slide number three, please. Right, the guiding principles and objectives of the work we did. The first assumption, the most basic one, is that the water and sewer systems must be financially self-supporting. Each one by itself must be self-supporting. The second principle was that you should have sufficient reserves to provide for contingencies and unplanned expenses, not excessive reserves, but reasonable reserves that conform to industry standards. The third one is that water and sewer rates should be adjusted regularly. People are much more comfortable with small, rather frequent increases than, you know, rare, really large increases. We want to make sure that rates are stable through sound financial management and system maintenance. System maintenance is the key. Keep your facilities in good shape. They last longer, your costs are lower. We want to look at water and sewer funds to make sure you've got stability. And we want a long-term plan to get you through the next period of time. The long-term capital plan, the next slide, there are some major drivers. The first three of these drivers are regulatory and legal. The Department of Environmental Quality, Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, EPA, and VDH. Those are the legal and regulatory forces which set the standards that you have to meet. And then the last one, the fourth bullet, we'll wait till we get down to the fourth bullet, is one that is the most expensive in your future. The first three have been expensive to date. The one that's looming at you is the age and condition of your infrastructure. You're an old city with a great history, but that means you have some really old infrastructure. In order to form a financial plan, you need to know the pieces of it. So let's go to the next slide, the revenue requirement. Revenue requirement is the total amount of money you need each year, year by year, to support the water system and the sewer system, made up of four pieces. The most basic one is the operating and maintenance expense, labor, electricity, chemicals, things like that. The second thing is the debt service, the outstanding debt you have right now and the debt service on that debt, which extends out for a bunch of years. I mean, typically you borrow money for long periods of time, up to 30 or 40 years. The third element of the revenue requirement is cash-funded capital projects, small things that aren't large enough to borrow for or that you can afford to pay for out of current revenues. And the last thing, and this is what's really coming at you, is new debt and debt service, debt you're going to have to take on for future capital projects. You add the four of those items together and you come up with your annual revenue requirement. So we know year by year how much cash you're going to need. We project that for a period, we usually make projections for how for 20 years. The formal planning period is less than that. There are some assumptions that go with the revenue requirements, which are on the next slide. As I said, we have a 20-year planning period through fiscal year 2040. We have a long-term capital spending plan that is comprised of encumbrances, commitments you've made already, current year capital expenses, and the 20-year plan for projects over the next 20 years. We're being very conservative and assuming that all capital projects are debt-funded and that they're a 5% interest rate over a 30-year amortization period. Now, if you can get a lower interest rate, good, but let's be pleasantly surprised rather than assuming a lower interest rate than we're going to get. And then we also assume rate increases, that we're going to continue to do what you have been doing, which is to raise rates in five-year increments. So you may raise rates 3% a year for each of five years, or 4%, or 2%, or whatever. But the rates are going to be predictable so your customers know what to expect. And we want to have a cash balance at the end of five years that's equal to or a little bit more than 180 days, which is the level recommended by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board and encouraged by GFOA and its best management practices. And those assumptions, I'm sorry, the rate increases and these assumptions don't all apply to the status quo, the baseline, which is what we have right now. So these assumptions all apply to the projections going forward, but not to the situation you're in right this very second. One of the big things, as I mentioned, that's going to impact you is your long-term capital spending, which is identified on the next slide. And Erin told me you have printed copies of these. I'm not going to read these for you, but by category, you have some pretty big expenditures coming at you. On the water system, the distribution system, the pipes down the street and into people's houses, you have some big dollars coming at you. The transmission lines, the big water lines that typically 12 inches and larger kind of things that you use to move water around the city, the dams and reservoirs, things like that. On the sewer side, the big things coming at you, the collection system, the pipes down the street into which people discharge sewage, pumping, you've got pump stations to move the sewage to the treatment plant. And then you also have some vacuum facilities for places where sewage, rather than flowing by gravity, is sucked by a vacuum force to get it to the treatment plant. We have looked at a group, a variety of different ways to skin this cat, and it basically comes down to what you're doing right now, what we're calling a status quo, the baseline, the point against which you compare anything else, and two other scenarios. The status quo is pretty straightforward. We assume 5% annual rate increases to water rates and to sewer rates. We're going to put capital projects on hold until funding becomes available. And we're going to keep on transferring the money to the general fund each year. That transfer to the general fund of about $9 million is above and beyond reimbursement for indirect costs and above and beyond the payment in lieu of taxes. The first of the two scenarios that are, of the ones that are practical, is a sustainable water and sewer utility. We're going to increase water and sewer rates so that we get the water and sewer systems where they need to be, the physical condition they're in and operated properly, that we can adequately fund all the capital projects. And we would phase out the transfer to the general fund over 20 years. The purpose for the transfer to the general fund is lost in the clouds of history, reportedly having to do with a return on investment for assets that the city contributed to the utilities. Those assets are long depreciated and have probably little or no book value left upon which to earn a return. But I understand municipal finance, and I know the general fund really depends on that transfer. The second scenario, which is for a sustainable water utility, rather than sustainable water and sewer utility, just a water utility, assumes that you will divest yourself of the sanitary sewer system, the collection system that you have right now, that you'll increase water rates to provide for long-term sustainability, and that you'll fund capital projects adequately. We, at the moment, would take the entire transfer of $9 million to the general fund for both the water and sewer system combined and transfer all of that to the water fund. So the water fund would pay that full amount. The general fund wouldn't take an immediate hit, but we would phase that out over the next 20 years. And we would also transfer the obligations of the sewer fund for debt service and things like that to the water fund until they're extinguished. And future operating expenses of the sewer system and its revenues and capital project liabilities will all be transferred to a third party. The third party has not yet been determined, but there are, you know, a variety of options available to you. And we assume that either of those two scenarios, scenario one or two, would be effective next July, a year from now, July of 2021. So those are the two alternatives to compare to the baseline. There are, if we don't do something, we have some problems facing us and they become very serious. If we continue to delay investing in our infrastructure, if we don't put enough money into it to rehab it, to maintain it, to bring it up to standard, we're going to have more failures of service for customers for both water and sewer, which is both a health hazard and a political hazard, public safety hazard, all that kind of good thing. We're going to have increased risk of system-wide outages because of, you know, cascading failures. And obviously, system reliability goes down. We could have and would likely have the probability of having large sewage spills and backups would increase, and so we have some potential environmental impact. If we don't meet all the requirements, the regulations, and we mentioned some of the drivers, regulatory and legal authorities, if we don't comply with those standards, we're subject to fines and penalties and ultimately to enforcement actions by the Commonwealth, by EPA, by various agencies, which could be up to and including the appointing of a receiver, which would be the ultimate penalty. That's like the death penalty. That would take all the authority away from the city government and give it to an independent receiver. Okay, we have some comparisons. We've crunched a bunch of numbers. And we have a whole bunch of things that we tried to reduce to simple terms. We have, first, you're looking at what the expenditures would be, what the increases would be, the rate increases on the water side. The red is, I'm sorry, the red is the existing, the baseline situation. The blue is... I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, the blue is scenario one. It's hard for me to read. I've seen this so many times. The blue is the first scenario, where we try to make both the water and sewer systems sustainable. And the green is the second scenario, where we have a water system only and we divest, the city divests of the sewer collection system. That is one scenario. If we can go, you see on the right side is the cash position. If you follow the baseline, what we're doing now, you see where we run out of cash very quickly. We are in a deficit, and that deficit, the only place that money could come from is the general fund, which is not a very viable or realistic option. And then the green and blue, the two alternatives, the alternative one and alternative two, show what happens if you, how much cash you end up with and the balance you have if you keep both water and the sewer system or if you just keep the water system. It may look like there's not much difference between them, but there is when you get to the rate increases that are necessary to support them. Okay, the second scenario, if we divest of the, the city divests the sewer collection system to a third party, the baseline case is still there, shows, you know, how much you have to raise rates. The water-only scenario shows you what's going to happen. You have to raise rates significantly early on, but then after that, rate increases are small enough to be insignificant and not even show on this chart. And then if you go to the right, to the cash balance curve, you see that your cash position is much better on the second scenario than if you stuck with the first and kept the sewer system. So that all sounds good, but numbers are hard to grasp in the abstract. People don't really care about their rates. They care about their bills. So we put together a chart showing a comparison of water and sewer bills excluding the sewage treatment bill from HRSD. What you see there in, towards the lower middle, is where you are right now. So your water and sewer bills are towards the lower end, certainly less than the average or median water and sewer bills in the region. That doesn't make them any more palatable to people or any more affordable. They're still going to be expensive for anyone to afford, but by comparison, you're in pretty decent shape right now. All right, if we can go to the next slide, and we're getting there, bear with me. These are some of the sample bills, if we take the water or sewer or combined scenarios, the red being what we have right now, the blue being the water and sewer, the green being the water-only scenarios, showing the kind of increases that we're facing going forward. There's going to be increases no matter what you do. The question is how large the increases. And then obviously, what this analysis doesn't do is show the impact on different classes of customers. You'd have to go through a more detailed analysis, but it would be wasteful to spend that kind of money on that kind of analysis now till we get some policy guidance from the council. So there's two other curves there. I'm sorry, I should have asked to have those brought up. But you can see the kinds of rate increases that you're facing under the various scenarios for water and for sewer and combined. So what the message is that you inherited a system or systems, water and sewer systems, that need a lot of investment and maintenance to bring them to where they need to be. And no matter what you do, you're going to have to make some unpleasant choices. And so, you know, I ask you not to shoot the messenger. The next steps are pretty straightforward. You've already talked about transitional rate increases and have adopted and agreed to them. We're updating the financial plan right now. We assume you're going to want to think about this some more and analyze it, but make a decision pretty timely. So you will adopt some sort of plan to give guidance to the utilities department and to the city manager. And then we and other people, city staff and other kind of outside experts can help put together an implementation plan to do this. So with that, we'll be glad to take questions. I know we covered a lot of material and a lot of really big numbers in a short period of time, but let me just close with one example, something for you to think about. The average water and sewer line in your climate, in our climate, because we're at the same climate, should be good for 75 to 100 years if you take decent care of it. You have some water and sewer lines that are 130 years old, still in active service. Just because they're past their useful life doesn't mean they're going to fall apart tomorrow, but it means you got to be ready for them to start falling apart. And the level at which you are funding reinvest- And the level at which you are funding reinvestment rehabilitation of your water and sewer lines means that you're assuming by implicitly by your financial planning that they're all going to last 1,000 years. You are on a 1,000-year replacement cycle for your water and sewer lines, which I'm a born optimist, but that's more optimistic than I can be. So glad to answer whatever questions we can.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Donahue?
Yes, Mayor, this is Elizabeth Seamus.
Yes, go ahead, you have the floor.
Mr. Donahue, I'm, I'm not an engineer or a water quality expert by any means. So explain to me, who out there in the world wants to purchase a sewer system that needs a lot of repair? Who are these third-party people?
Well, investor-owned utilities that do this for profit would, they would offer, I'm sure there are some out there that would offer to buy your system, because under the laws that, that regulate rates for, for profit privately-owned water and sewer systems, they are guaranteed to recover their capital costs and their operating costs. And the regulator of those rates is the State Corporation Commission in Virginia. So they would go to the state and they would say, we're spending $80 million, it's costing us $11 million a year to operate the thing, we're going to sell so many gallons of water and treat so much sewage or carry so much sewage, here's what our rates. And the State Corporation Commission would look at their costs to make sure they're reasonable, that they're not flying everybody first class and not putting everybody up in luxury penthouses. And then they'd say, those are reasonable and prudent costs and so, yes, we will approve your rates and you would have nothing to say about what the rates are that are charged. You do have an alternative in the area for sewage treatment, which is HRSD, and I know some people criticize HRSD and any organization can always do better, but they are not a for-profit, they're a nonprofit, you know, regional governmental kind of entity whose job is just to cover their costs. Now, they can be sometimes challenging to work with, but the premise generally would be, if you don't have a profit motive, your rates are going to be lower because you don't have to pay dividends to stockholders and things like that. Terms of, of what you could sell the system for, realistically, the sewer system isn't worth anything, but somebody would pay for it because they would be, if it were a private party, would pay for it because they would be guaranteed to recoup their investment by law. A lot of local governments are skittish about privatization because they lose all control over rates and fees that are charged, but then they also are able to hand off the political onus of rate increases because it's become very expensive to provide the service and rates are never going to go down. Anybody who thinks that, you know, is, is more of a Pollyanna than you can imagine because the, the, the standards keep getting tighter and the costs keep getting higher, which means the rates are going to keep going up. So, I mean, you could realistically give the sewer system to HRSD, you could sell it for some nominal price to an investor-owned utility, but then your citizens will get to pay for it all over again, they paid for it once already and they get to pay for it again if you sold it to a for-profit utility. You're not in an enviable position and it's not something that you can blame on this council, it's not a situation that occurred in the last five or 10 years, this is something that's been building for a very long period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, I see Paul Battle and, and I heard somebody, was that you, Councilman Moody? Dale Moody, Bill, you've got the floor and then Paul.
My question is, are there any municipalities in Virginia that have taken the privatization route on, on their sewage systems?
Let's ask.
I'm sure there are, I'm going to have to think about that, but I'm sure there are. I know we did some work for, I think over Lake of the Woods, no, the Lake Montebello Homeowners Association sold their system, which was through some senate, through some water or sanitary district that was basically a governmental unit, they sold it to, I believe, Aqua Virginia and they have been engaged in unending disputes with Aqua Virginia ever since about what the rate should be. And I, I really don't know all the details, so that's, I'm sure that's not a complete depiction of it. But Virginia, City of Alexandria has a privately-owned water system, Virginia American Water owns the Alexandria water system. I'm sure if I scratched my head, I could come up with some more examples of privately-owned utilities in Virginia. They're not as common in Virginia as they are in some states and I don't know if that's culture or history or because of the law or regulatory structure in Virginia. The State Corporation Commission is a pretty aggressive agency in protecting customer rights, but they still have to allow people to make a reasonable return.
Mr. Donahue, this is John Rowe. Let's make this easy and with the consensus of council, let's ask the city manager and her staff to do a survey to find out if, what cities, towns, counties have sold either all or part of their utility system to the private.
Yes, sir. We will work with her and get that quickly.
Yep, but our direction is to the city manager. Paul Battle, you've got the, the floor, sir. You're muted, you need to unmute yourself.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Mayor, but I'm really not interested in what everybody else is doing. I, I'm not a follower per se, I don't care what I, my greatest concern is which route is the best route for my constituents. If a private sector takes over, take over, and then they go to the General Assembly with their representatives and their persuasive pocketbooks, we don't know where our citizens are going to be in reference to pay in the future. So how do we maintain the system and stay in a reasonable position to make sure that our constituents take the least amount of blunt that can be thrown, you know, whether it's incorporating private agency, but really I'm, I'm specifically want to know what things that we can do to keep the autonomy at home and make the system work under the government umbrella that is under.
The most, most.
Mr. Donahue, hold on, hold on, Mr. Donahue. Okay, please.
I'm having a hard time hearing.
But I'll, I'll recognize you at the appropriate time. Paul, to, to answer your question, it's always good to find out if there has been another sale and what the pitfalls were. Your, your question is very valid. I think it comes down to this.
That's the mayor, that's.
Hold on, Paul, I've got the floor and I think I can help on this. What we, what we're hearing and what we've heard prior to tonight is that our utility system needs improvements, okay? You finance those improvements from the customer and the customers are going to have to pay for the improvements, whether we own it or some other entity own, own it. If you sell any component to the private sector, they're going to get not only their return on the investment, but, but they're going to get a profit. One might say that we make a profit now, put that into the general fund and the city's been doing that for decades, not just for five, 10, 15, it's been doing it for more than 40.
Mr. Mayor, I understand your explanation and I'll show you that, that explanation in what I'm talking about here.
Oh, I understand what you're saying and what I'm, what I'm trying to share with you is my discomfort with the concept of selling, on the face of it, a component part of a utility system and losing the ability to regulate the rate. I think that we have a better, we have a better chance to regulate the rate if we own it than trusting with the, the State Corporation Commission. I think we're agreeing, Paul, okay? Okay. And I, I think we have to put this in the context of, of what does our future look like for our non-utility tax base? And it would be really great to be able to wean the payment that the utility fund makes to the general fund over time. Are we going to experience a, a growth in general fund revenues in the next three, four, five, 10 years, sufficient to cover the weaning of that $9 million? And if we, if we do, we have the opportunity then to put, take that $9 million and put it where it should be, which is into the improvements for the utility fund. What we're hearing tonight is, is just one bite of eating an elephant and we've got a lot to digest and swallow here and I think it's safe to say that this is going to take some, some real serious discussions on the part of, of the city council.
Can I see another? I have a, I have a question for Mr. Donahue.
All right, you have the floor.
Mr. Donahue, Councilman Shannon Glover, I, I know council, we recently approved the rate increase for our water and sewer that I believe takes effect January 1. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So that rate increase that we've approved, how does that, how does that move us forward or is that moving us in the right direction with that thought process based on your analysis?
It is like moving one inch down the football field.
Wow, yeah, okay.
I mean, you are facing really major rate increases. The sewer system alone over the next 20 years needs $1 billion with a B, dollars' worth of investment.
Right.
That is, that is gargantuan for the city of your size.
It is.
And, but the point is, is that that money's got to come from somebody and it's going to come from the cost, from the customers. And it, it's going to come from the customers where it's owned by the city of Portsmouth or the ABC Sewer Company or Hampton Roads Sanitation District, it's not going to be free. And so, the, the goal, the goal, the goal to wean ourselves off the, the payment that the utility fund makes to the general fund is really noble and something that we need to really put our, our nose to the groundstone and start that process. And, and again, I think there are some, there are some projections we need to make on the general fund side about, for example, I'll use the casino. We've seen the pro forma on the casino, we're looking at $16 million worth of new revenue. If we, the first year took half of that and weaned our way away from the, we would still only have, may have $9 million worth of new revenue. And someone will say, well, John, that's silly, you're betting on something that the referendum hadn't even passed yet, but it's, when we look at the utility system, we have to look at it in the total context of the city's finances.
Yes, sir.
Let's, one other question that we have to Mr. Donahue. Bill, you're muted, so I can see, are you asking for the floor?
Yes, I thought I did. A couple of questions, one is our municipal water customers, are they going to, are they going to have a separate rate increase or, or residential customers going to borne the, carrying the heavy load?
Your, your municipal customers would get a proportional increase. They, their rates may be different than the retail customers because, because they don't get all the services your retail customers get, but you would raise their costs per unit for services at least as much as you raise your retail rates inside the city. You would be, you, you would be disadvantaged, you'd be, you'd be cheating your retail customers if you didn't, you, you, you don't want, you can't, you can't stick it to your municipal customers, but you can't give them a sweetheart deal either. You've got to charge them on the same basis as you charge your own retail customers.
So proportionally, they're going up the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. They may have some contracts that it may take you a couple of years to work, you know, to work their way through the snake, but you've got, basically you have to charge them on the same way you charge your retail customers. I believe you've got a couple of contracts right now that are starting to tail off and you're going to have to negotiate new ones.
I think we ought to get, I think we need to get the terminology correct. We, we in the past have referred to sales outside the city of Portsmouth as bulk water sales.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're, is that what you're talking about? No, I'm asking Councilman Moody, is that what your question was, Bill?
Yes, yes, Mayor. My other question is on the, on the maintenance, on that cost, how much of that, what percentage of that is deferred maintenance and what percentage is, are there mandates?
Everything you're doing is by mandate. I mean, this, we're, your capital improvements plan and the money utilities department is planning to spend is driven by the health standards and the environmental standards. They're not gold, they're not building gold-plated pipelines, they're building things that meet the minimum standards or maybe exceed them a little bit, but you're not building things that are unnecessarily extravagant. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but it's the regulations that drive what you spend.
Mayor, when I get a chance.
That, that answers my question, thanks.
All right, I may make sure there.
Mayor, I have a question as well.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Donahue, thank you for the presentation. I guess my question is whether it's a third-party sale or a private sale, they see in the water at $392 million and the sewer cost being $1 billion, 139 million, is that a, a specific contractor that handles that or is it certain different people, whether we keep it in-house or whether somebody else handles that? So the cost for the 20-year period, how is that allocated to whoever is going to perform?
Well, if, if, if you were to transfer ownership of the sewer system to a third-party, whether it were HRSD or an investor-owned utility, they would take on the responsibility for coming up with that billion dollars, but then they would recover it through their If you, if you sold to a large investor-owned utility, Aqua America, American Waterworks Service Corp., somebody like that, they have economies of scale and financing, but then so does HRSD and HRSD, or if, if there were some other government agency you transferred it to, has the advantage of tax-exempt financing, so they can borrow money a couple percent lower interest rate than could an investor-owned utility like American Waterworks or Aqua Virginia or anybody like that. But they would take on the responsibility for providing the capital.
Okay. And the services, who, who, what kind of company performs these services?
Well, there are a whole bunch of investor-owned utilities that would operate the system for you. There's also engineering firms that have subsidiaries that operate water and wastewater systems. There's a wide variety of people you could get to operate the thing, but the, probably the simplest one for you, and I, I have, I don't, I don't have a dog in this fight, I mean, I, I have, have no bias one way or the other, probably the lowest cost way for you and your citizens over time is to transfer. Probably the lowest cost way for you and your citizens over time is to transfer the sewer system to a municipal entity, whether HRSD or some other special purpose, um, nonprofit municipal thing on which you had representation on the board. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you're muted. I can't hear you. Mr. Mayor, you're muted. Can't hear you.
Lisa.
Now I can hear you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm, I'm directing my comments to the Vice Mayor. Thank you. Um, if you recall at, uh, annual meetings like the VML, uh, annual meeting exhibitors, and this takes true, a place to at the National League of Cities, the US Conference Mayors, um, typically there are at least two or three, um, vendors who offer to buy, want to talk to you about selling the public utility. So they're out there. Some of Virginia companies, some operate outside of Virginia. So, and they, they've expressed interest when we walked by their booth. But again, when you, when you look at, at the system and what needs to be done, there's only one source of revenue and that's the customer. And the, the rate's going to have to come up, whether it goes up by the city or HRSD or some private company. I'm concerned that we lose the control. And yeah, uh, we can say, hide behind the political field and say, we didn't do it, they did it. But I think that's a, that's a cop-out. Uh, let's see. Nate, you haven't, uh, had the floor. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time, but I do fear handing control over to somebody else, which would control the rates. I would prefer the rates be controlled by this council or future council. Side third party.
Okay. Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Battle.
Councilman, you're muted.
The presentation matched the recommendation, but, uh, something of this nature. We can't push, uh, with one or two or three meetings. This is something that has to, uh, be given a lot of thought and a lot of investigation. And so, um, a lot of things we're going to have to do in closed session possibly on this matter too. A lot of, uh, conversations that we're going to have. So this, I'm sure this is just, uh, wetting our beak, giving us a small indication of what we'll be dealing with, but, uh, this is not a quick process. We, we're going to need to put, uh, our best thinking caps on and, uh, be very prudent and not rushful in this endeavor. Thank you.
Uh, just like we did with the pension obligation bonds, we ended up having a, a team of probably five different disciplines involved, um, as we looked at the alternative. So you're right, Paul. This is just the, the first bite, uh, at this matter. Dr. Patton, you asked for the floor?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as indicated, um, in my opening remarks, that this first discussion started at your City Council retreat. We were hoping that we could bring Next Gen before you much earlier in, in the late February, early March timeframe, but with COVID-19, we were not able to. What we're putting before you and what, um, you, th, those of council who have been on council for four years, uh, starting in 2015, 16, we began to talk about a public utility. In 18, City Council adopted with that budget a resolution establishing the 5%. This budget, there was the additional 4%. But what this allows you to do as we begin to move toward the 2022 budget, which actually starts the work on the 2022 budget starts in September. In this timeframe, which are four, almost five months, um, council will make some decision as it pertains to recommended rates that could put this city by 2040 in a position that its public utilities, which includes both its sewer and its water, is at a status that we will not be talking 100 and, 100, no, 1,112 years to address some of our concerns. We had a water main break today, which I immediately sent to you when, uh, it happened, um, in the Churchillan area, but we were fortunate that we could get out there, it's four inches deep, we could make the deep repair. Um, some of the things that we're dealing with are 140, 130, 150 years old that we're still utilizing. So the decisions will have to be made and when we're dealing with rates, we know that, um, those are increases on our citizens, but at the same time, we have an obligation that we must keep their water, their sewer, the dams that we have. Uh, one of the things that's new that you may not have picked up, but I've been calling to your attention, uh, effective coming in this, um, 2020, um, this, we're in 2021, 22, our public utilities will be responsible for the testing of all school, uh, water, um, coming into the building and the pipes that have to be, a certain kind of pipes have to be updated within our schools. And our, our oldest schools are almost 60 years old. So there are a lot of federal state, uh, responsibilities that we cannot dodge and they have to be done. But this will be several, several more conversations as it pertains to our water and sewer coming forward. This is just Next Gen presenting tonight, but in about a couple of weeks to a month, we're coming back to you so we can continue this discussion and you'll be ready for the 2022 budget. Uh, it's hard for me to say the word, 2022, the 2022 budget. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
All right, I'm unmuted now.
Yes, sir. We can hear you now.
This has been a good conversation. Any other, uh, questions for Mr. Donahue? Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll move on to our next, um, presentation, which is the broadband authority update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. I, I don't envy you, your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, and Paul Battle's got a question. Paul, you're muted. Can you unmute yourself?
What is the, the reasonable reserve for our city?
I'm sorry? Can you?
Did they leave us? That, that the group leave us?
Now, ask your question, we'll ask the city manager. Uh, we have a financial policy. Why don't we ask the city manager to, um, to bring that back, Paul? That's a good question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones will now come forward with the update on the broadband authority. Mr. Jones.
For those of you not speaking, if you could mute your microphone, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. As you directed, bring a report back from the previous briefing that Mr. Lockaby from Gwen Waddell Carroll and Lockaby provided, uh, regarding the formation of a broadband authority for the city of Portsmouth. This is just a very quick high-level PowerPoint summarizing some of those key takeaways as well as the next steps that we would need to do should the council, uh, wish to continue and form a broadband authority. So the presentation outlines just simply the portion of broadband authority and the authority action items, if that is the desired, uh, direction for council. So just a quick summation, the attributes between what the Portsmouth Broadband Authority would entail. Um, if the broadband authority would be formed for the city of Portsmouth, it would enable the city of Portsmouth to become an internet service provider. Now, I say that from a standpoint that doesn't mean that the city has to be an internet service provider. It gives the city the legal foundation to be one. So that goes anywhere from adding Wi-Fi to our parks or downtown High Street, all the way to becoming a full-fledged provider and having service to our residents and businesses. So I just want to stress that doesn't mean, but that this gives the legal foundation. It allows for the protection of trade secrets should that become, uh, part of the authority, as well to support strategic economic development incentives, um, regarding connectivity and attracting technology businesses, indoor firms, or promoting, uh, the city indoor region with smart technologies. And it, most importantly, it allows us to do the public-private partnerships, um, as Mr. Lockaby briefed. These are not what you would consider or have been involved with before with the P3s or the public-private partnerships. This would allow the city, um, to partner with another entity to provide service and not be the last mile. The city would be the middle mile, as we refer to it. So that provides those different avenues. If this, if council chose not to form the broadband authority, then it basically just remains a status quo. It remains, remains what it is now. Uh, the level of service to the citizens and businesses would not change. Um, we would have no protection for the trade secrets. We could not even provide internet service to our parks, festivals, or economic development corridors, or even, you know, provide it, uh, to beyond our actual municipal building to our libraries or parking lots, or even partner with, um, the schools with the connectivity related to COVID and virtual learning. And of course, we could not, uh, be a part of any type of partner, um, public-private partnering entities and/or relationships. So the first question going forward, I think, um, and I'll hand this back to Dr. Patton is, what is the direction? Because this first bullet point is, determines the next steps forward if that is the, uh, desire of the council to continue with the formation of a broadband authority and then that will, um, dictate the next article, or not the next articles, but the next steps with regarding to that. So I'll yield regarding that.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Uh, Mr. Jones has provided, um, the report back of information you asked. Mr. Jones, could you go back to your last frame? Please? Not the, the one where it's the, the All right. Uh, there were questions, um, from council as to what's, what's the attributes, what are the benefits if we are authority and, and if we're not an authority, just what are, what remains, as he said, status quo. We are all very aware of where education is going, not only in the Commonwealth, but across this nation and within our city. And, um, conversations which I've, I'm having, had one today, had one yesterday, have a scheduled meeting on Friday with our superintendent, um, it deals with availability of, of the internet and access to the internet for every, uh, nook and cranny within our city. And, uh, particularly our children are going to have to have access, um, for virtual learning. And so here's where we are. These are the, the attributes and the non-attributes and then, um, the next steps which would involve, would, would involve your determination of whether or not you would like to move forward. Go to the last frame, Mr. Jones, please. Um, create the broadband authority. We shared with you that the City Council can be the board members. Um, um, the, uh, legal, uh, body would draft the Articles of Incorporation, uh, General Circulation Advertisement, the 30-day post-public hearing. Um, then there would have to be a referendum and then after that, a City Council adoption. And I'll let Mr. Ashby speak if he would like to add anything to that since below, uh, the board members, it falls into the legal hands. Mr. Ashby.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. The only thing I would add is I believe, uh, based on discussions with Mr. Lockaby, the referendum is a option.
Option.
I don't believe it's a requirement. Yeah, uh, Mr. Jones may refresh my memory, but otherwise, uh, Dr. Patton's recitation was on point.
And, uh, this is, uh, John Rowe. That's my recollection. Let's, let's get a consensus of, uh, council, uh, and I'll start. I'll break the ice. I'm for creating a Portsmouth broadband authority and making the board member City Council. It doesn't always have to, uh, be populated with members of council, but it's a good start. Uh, with that said, uh, Lisa, what's your position on this?
I'm absolutely on board with establishing a broadband, um, authority.
Okay. Excuse my informality. I'm going to take them as I see people. Paul, are you on board? You're, you're muted, sir.
Yes, I'm on board, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Um, Elizabeth, I see you next. Are you on board?
100%. I think this is a no-brainer.
Okay. Um, Shannon, I don't see you, but are you on board?
Yes, affirmative.
Yes, sir. Uh, Bill Moody, are you on board?
Yes, definitely.
And Nate, uh, are you on board?
Yes, I concur.
Okay, with, we have unanimous consent. Let's, uh, with council's consensus, let's, uh, direct the city manager and city attorney to bring back the appropriate documents to, to implement what we just, uh, agreed to. With no dissension? All right. Uh, we'll go to the next, uh, presentation, which is on political science. Dr. Patton?
Mr. Baldwin will make a, a very brief presentation on political signage. Mr. Baldwin.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Patton. And as indicated, as soon as the, uh, presentation comes up, this will be, uh, a brief presentation. But I know this is a, um, an issue that comes up for council members and, uh, members of the public from time to time. And so we want to walk very quickly through the way the city regulates, um, its political signs. So, um, we're really going to cover these three bullet points tonight. We're going to talk about signs that are in the street rights of way. Um, we're talking about ones that are on private property and we'll talk about ones on city property. And I've noted on the bottom of the slide, you'll see the, um, the reference to the Reed versus Town of Gilbert. And as, uh, some members of council remember back in 2015, there was a, um, US Supreme Court decision on sign regulations and we, uh, were required to rewrite our sign regulations in order to comply with the, um, uh, the outcome of that, um, Supreme Court case. And that was done with the assistance of the city attorney's office and, uh, some assistance from, um, private consultants with Clarion. And, uh, the attorney by the name of Sharon Pandak is a, um, expert in zoning regulations in, in Virginia. So I'm going to start off with the, the section on street rights of way. If we can go to the next slide. Cause any of this gets into the question, um, uh, comes up quite a bit and, um, for everyone to be aware, we regulate signs through two sections of the city code. The, um, zoning ordinance, which I'll get to next, uh, applies to private property and it runs right up until you get to the city right-of-way line. From the city right-of-way line, um, uh, if you go back to the previous slide. Okay. So on the street rights of way, this is regulated under chapter 32. This really comes under our engineering department as our, uh, This really comes under our engineering department as our controller of the chapter. This deals with street sidewalks and local improvements. That's the name of the chapter in the code. So, in that case, other than traffic control signs, we do not allow, the city does not allow signs in the right-of-way. They are deemed to be a safety hazard, and when they are placed, when any signs are placed in the right-of-way, they can be removed by city staff. It's pretty common to get those signs out of the right-of-way. They're a hazard for the people who are placing them in the right-of-way. They're a hazard for the city staff after remove them. They can be a hazard for the driving and pedestrian public as well. You can see by these two slides we show, that we show a couple of places where signs are, were, were placed, just for your edification. I'm sure you've seen these kind of signs before. We see the signs in the median.
Absolutely.
People do that quite often. Those are not permitted. Those, again, are considered hazardous. And we also see signs in the median and the right-of-way where people attach them to utility poles. And so, if you attach signs with utility pole, that's not permitted as well. So, any sign that gets placed in the city right-of-way is subject to immediate removal by the city, and that's covered by Chapter 32 of the city code. So, we go to the next slide, please. So, we'll talk about private property. Private property, as you're all aware, this is regulated by the city zoning ordinance, including the city sign regulations. When it comes to political signs under the zoning ordinance, as you see on this slide here, they are exempt from regulation, and this is partly an outcome from that Reed versus the Supreme Court case that I was mentioning for, the Reed versus Town of Gilbert, where they get into regulating based on message on the sign as opposed to anything else. So, they just are treated as exempt. They're also listed as exempt in the state code, 15.2-109. So, of course, the question we get into all the time, where's the public-private, the public-private property line? And we'll use this slide here as just a simple example of what we would look at. So, without having a survey, the, the way the city typically goes about determining where the right-of-way line is, is the private property is deemed to be behind the sidewalk or if their utility poles are behind the utility pole. So, in this slide here, you'll see, you've got a couple of signs in someone's front yard. You can see the sidewalk in the front. The signs are behind the sidewalk, therefore, they're deemed to be on private property and would be permitted. Had that sign, had the signs being that little stretch of grass between the sidewalk and the street, that's the right-of-way. That's what we call the verge. That's still right-of-way. They're not permitted in, in that area. That's street right-of-way. So, it just gives you the simple breakdown. The bottom line is, signs in the right-of-way are not permitted. Signs on private property are exempt from zoning regulation during the, during the course of an election. And we go to the last slide, as our question slide. So, that's pretty much the way the signs are operated, are regulated in a nutshell. I mentioned, we do have some additional information that's posted on the Department of Permits and Inspections webpage. They have some additional examples to show this exact same kind of breakdown, the signs that people are aware that are, that are removed. Again, those are the signs that are in the right-of-way, signs that are on private property. If for some reason, and it's pretty rare, but if for some reason, there's a sign placed inappropriately under the zoning or under the zoning regulatory provisions of the private property, we have to follow the zoning enforcement protocols that are mandated by the state code and by the city code, which would entail us notifying the private property owner of the violation, giving them an opportunity to, to remove or appeals. That's a much longer process. The city does not go on private property and remove, and remove signs. And with that, hopefully, that gives you sort of the sign regulations in a nutshell. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Baldwin or for the city manager or for the city attorney? Hearing none, we'll move on. Our next item is public hearings.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I have, I had two additional report, report backs just too quickly.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. The CARES Act funding which the city has received, you are aware, through the CDBG CARES Act funds, the city has $1.1 million that comes as a result of and comes through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Just wanted you to know that June 9th, the city submitted to HUD an amendment to the annual action plan, which is required for the money to be drawn down, a completion of HUD's review of the amendments to the city's action plan. HUD will provide the city with a contract, and the funds will be available, at which time the city will sign agreements with the service providers. And this is a reimbursable grant with city providing funds to the sub-recipience, sub-recipients based on proof of an expenditure. And those organizations that are a part of the action plan that has gone forward are for Kids Incorporated, the HERS Shelter Incorporated, Parks and Recreation for their youth meal service, Parks and Recreation for their education services, the Stop Incorporated for homeless services, Portsmouth Health Department, the Wesley Community Center, the Hampton Roads Community Health Center, and the Independent Center. Those expenditures cannot go forward until HUD clears and approves our action plan, which is updated with these recommendations in it. And secondly, you are aware that the city received the 8.2 million for the CARES Act, and I want to report this evening that the Portsmouth Economic Development will receive $1 million toward the COVID-19 Business Recovery Grant. The, the Economic Development has analyzed the creation of a local assistance program that will be provided through the Economic Development Team for businesses in need of additional financial assistance. We will have everything in place by July 1 for businesses and entities to begin to fill out the information to be considered for those grants. And we are looking right now at what the costs are for fire and police doing this COVID-19 in regard to salary information for salaries and overtime. And right now, we're looking at about $6.6 million from March, the designated date to present. So, we will keep you updated, and you will be receiving in your CC be the guidelines and this information on the CARES Act on Friday. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I have a question.
Question.
Bill Moody.
Okay.
We can't hear you. Can you?
Can't hear you, Mayor. And we can't read lips. Please, I can't. Lisa, why don't you go first?
Okay. I think the mayor is still muted, but we, Dr. Patton, thank you for that presentation. But through the CDBG CARES Act Fund, one, I guess, how much was the allocation? And since it is a HUD offering, was the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority considered for any allocation? Because in their last meeting, which I was in attendance, they are looking to provide some Chromebooks and maybe some internet and wifi access for those students who were not able to have access during the pandemic when they were home. They were not able to get their assignments completed due to their inability to have access to the internet wifi and then, and of course, the Chromebooks. I didn't know if that would come through the Portsmouth Public Schools or if they would be able to offer that to their public housing residents.
Vice Mayor, in talking with Mr. Bland and talking with the superintendent, we did not want to duplicate what our children in Portsmouth are going to receive. According to Dr. Bracy and what the Commonwealth is saying, that every child pre-K through high school, so every child in Portsmouth who's connected with any schools will get a Chromebook for, for their virtual learning. And so, outside of that, Mr. Bland may ask for something as it pertains to some other kinds of things for his children in that community. But we are also through Parks and Recreation, providing recreation utility bags for all children that are going to be in the community housing going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, you have the floor. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Dr. Patton, on the Economic Development Grant, do we know what size grants those will be? Dr. Patton?
Uh-huh. I'm unmuting now, Mr., Mr. Moody. They will range anywhere from $5,000 to $25,000.
And what type of grants are those? Are they matching, or?
No, this, this, these are the monies that are provided through the CARES Act to assist small businesses and businesses that are impacted through COVID. So, these will be, we're saying they're grants, but they're nothing that has to be paid back. I, I have in front of me the guidelines, which I'm not going to go through at this time, but you will receive them on Friday.
Okay, great.
Okay? All right. Thank you. And it, it will be broadly advertised for our Portsmouth businesses.
Good.
Okay.
Any other questions on this? Dr. Patton, your next item. You're good? Okay. We're now at public hearing, item 20-144, and the first item is a continuation of a public hearing that we started at our last council meeting, and we carried it forward to this meeting. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Item CUP 20-01, Airline Commercial Corridor. Mark Davis requests a use permit for an outdoor kennel at 2880 B Airline Boulevard. The property is owned General Mixed Use, GMU, and is a part of the Victory West Shopping Center. The property is further described as Tax Map 577, Parcel 20. The comprehensive plan recommends commercial development for the property. Planning Commission recommends denial, and this item is deferred from the June 9th, 2020 city council meeting.
It's my understanding that the applicant is present with us via the telephone. Mr. Davis, are you here?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Sir, you will have 10 minutes to explain your application to city council. You have the floor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name's Mark Davis. I'm the owner of Port Rover LLC. I have with me today Ms. Sherry Capuano. She's my facilities manager. She runs the day-to-day operations of the facility. We're here tonight trying to obtain a use permit for our doggy daycare boarding, boarding and training facility located on Airline Boulevard. We've been in operation since December of 2019. The permit would allow us to build a small fenced-in area at the rear of our facility, and the main purpose for applying for this permit is for the safety and well-being of our animals and, and our staff. As we are located in a shopping plaza, the only rear exit is a large fire door with a panic bar, and the door poses a problem and a threat because the dogs can easily jump on it and open the door and make an escape. So, as we cannot interfere or reinforce the fire door, having a fenced-in area would prevent the dogs from escaping. If a dog were to escape our facility, obviously, it would not, it would cause damage to our business name and may also result in injury and maybe death to the animal. This fenced-in area would also prevent our staff from having to walk and supervise dogs on leashes in a large grassy area out behind the facility. If our staff and dogs are left exposed like that, they, they can encounter cars and trucks that pass through the area, and as well as maybe loose dogs from the neighborhood. The fenced-in area would be equipped with plenty of shade for the dogs and a thick layer of cedar mulch chips on the ground and plenty of water for the dogs to stay cool. Any excessive barkers would be immediately removed as to not disturb the neighbors, and on days that are extremely hot and cold, the dogs would remain inside. This would not serve as a primary area for going to pee and poo. We have been operating for over six months and as our indoor, as an indoor-only facility. Although we do not have grass inside, dogs relate our facility as the same as they would a dog park. They find the indoor settings to be acceptable place to do their business. Only a handful of dogs are walking on leash outside at any given time, and these dogs are typically have medical conditions or are aggressive towards other dogs and cannot, cannot play in our playyards inside. For dogs that do choose to do their business outside, we've consulted with other doggy daycare facilities and researched options to keep the area safe and clean. We've found the ideal option would be to spray down the area daily with a non-toxic, environmentally-friendly sanitizer that neutralizes odor and makes for safe runoff. This is, this is the same sanitizer used by many vet's offices and doggy daycare facilities worldwide, and solid waste would be disposed of by hand with bags, just as we do inside. We've provided the city with a number of signed letters from the neighbors located directly behind Port Rover, and we made several attempts to contact each resident that would be affected, and if we were not able to get a hold of them, a letter was left on their front door. The letter explains everything, just as I've explained it here today. Not only was everyone, not only was everyone we talked to on board with the fenced-in area, many of them are now clients of ours, and they've stopped by and took tours of our I would be glad to take any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Does any member of council have a question for Mr. Davis? Thank you, sir. I don't think we have any questions. With that, our next order...
Mayor, this councilman Glover, I have a question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. You have the floor, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Davis, and looking at the, at the, the drawing or the picture in the back where you, you're proposing to put this area, do cars come back and forth next to that area? In that, in that area right there, are cars coming back and forth?
Yes. No, I mean, it's not a, a busy street. There's delivery vehicles and whatnot that come back there, and employees of some of the other shops that pass through there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Davis? With, with that, we're ready to reopen the public hearing, and this public hearing is reopened. And Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the, from the public on this particular item?
We didn't receive any, Mayor, but there were letters from the residents that were submitted and included in the packet for members of the city council to view.
All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing on UP-20-01. I hereby close the public hearing, and so that we can put this matter before us for our consideration is, are there... And so that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is, are there a motion?
May for approval.
Sir, second.
Second.
Now, this matter is on its first reading. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Madam Clerk, did you get the maker and the second?
I did. This motion was made by Councilwoman Simmons and seconded by Mr. Moody.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Which is to approve the conditional use permit. Hearing none, we're ready for the question. This will be a roll call, oral vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. If you're opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. And this matter will be on our agenda for the next meeting for its second reading, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. We now come to unfinished business. Item twenty dash one forty-four, rezoning and use permits. And this is at consent agenda, we have two items. And Madam Clerk, will you read first A and then B?
Yes, sir. Item A, ordinance granting the request of Anthony Claude of Claude's Lawn Care to rezone approximately point five-two-nine acres at fifteen-twenty-five County Street.
Is now exiting.
From D two form-based code, the furniture is designated as public open space to light industrial for use as a storage yard. Z twenty oh one, first reading vote approved seven zero. And then item B, resolution granting the request of Jeremy Mills of I C S Home Investments LLC for a use permit for four townhomes on point-two-three-four acres at a density of seventeen dwelling units per acre at six-oh-nine Columbia Street in the downtown zoning district and T four sub-district. U P nineteen twenty, first reading vote seven zero, approved.
Thank you, ma'am. Because this is a consent agenda, our protocol is that we usually consider the consent agenda with one motion so that we can put this matter before us for our consideration. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which would be approved in both of these items?
Motion to approval?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, did you get the maker of the motion and the second?
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Councilman Clark and seconded by Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
And Madam Clerk, we, we did get couple, public comments on this, did we not?
Yes, sir, we received one formal comment. That was from Mr. Lawrence Oath and he is in opposition.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we're ready for the question. This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. If you're opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. We're now at city manager's report and agenda item twenty dash one fifty-eight, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of five hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said amount in the F Y twenty twenty Grants Fund for use by the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for the Victim Witness Program.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Mark Davis?
Is now exiting.
Move for adoption?
Motion, it's second. We're ready for discussion. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for the question. Again, this will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye. Opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. We're now at agenda item twenty dash one fifty-nine, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program funds in the amount of two hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars and appropriating said amount in the F Y twenty twenty Grants Fund for use by the city for the purchase of equipment and services to counteract COVID nineteen.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for the discussion on this motion. Any discussion? We're now ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, this will be a roll call vote. Please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. Which, we're now at item twenty dash one sixty, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending the F Y twenty twenty-one adopted budget for the city of Portsmouth to, one, appropriate funds in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars from the stormwater management balance to the F Y twenty twenty-one operating budget for the stormwater management fund. And two, appropriate funds in the amount of two million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars from the public utilities fund balance to the F Y twenty twenty-one operating budget for the public utilities fund.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Madam Clerk, did you get the maker of the motion and the second?
Yes, sir. It was made by Councilman Glover and seconded by Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion on this motion? We're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, when the roll is called, please indicate by saying aye. If you're opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. We're now at item twenty dash one sixty-one, which is the consideration adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to transfer the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city manager's contingency line item in the transfers and contingency section of the non-departmental category of the F Y twenty twenty general fund budget to the Department of Engineering section of the F Y twenty twenty general fund budget for the removal of the Confederate monument located at the intersection of Court Street and High Street.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We are ready for a discussion. And Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens' comments on this?
Yes, sir. We had two, Mr. Mark Adolde-Giatrowski was in opposition and Mr. Danny Robey. He provided comment, not indicating opposition or support.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mayor.
I'm sorry, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a question. Have we gotten estimates yet on what the cost would actually be? I know we had one offer doing it pro bono, but have we gotten any hard estimates? And my question is to Dr. Patton, I guess.
Yes, yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor.
You have. Go ahead.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I do not have an estimate for the removal at this time. I hope to have an estimate by estimate hopefully by the end of the week.
And is this for removal and storage and re, I guess, moving it to an additional location? Or is this just, is this money just for removal period?
I, I'll answer that. It was the direction and was the consensus of council that this money be for the movement, all the engineering work that's necessary. With the understanding that if it required more, that the city manager would come back to us.
So this could or could not include storage and our re-reaction?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question.
I think I heard two voices.
All the ladies want to talk. Yes.
Alright, I'll recognize the Vice Mayor first.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question to Dr. Patton, do we know, are these, are they bids? Are they RFPs? Or how are we determining who will be allocated any portion of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's going to be reserved for this purpose?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, we have contractors that are working with us already on different projects that are already on contract to work for us. So right now, we do not have to go out for bid since we have been waiting for an estimate from a present contractor.
You have engineers, for example, under a years' contract? Yeah. This would be a task order. Alright.
Yes, Mayor.
Counsel. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think my question actually is for the city attorney. And I know I've thought about this a lot. One of the things that concerns me, I mean, I'm all for getting the, that monument out of Court Street, the sooner the better at this point. However, I am concerned about two things. A, moving it twice may, you know, give it more opportunity for damage. B, of course, there's a cost involved. And C, I thought we couldn't move it until after July first or whatever, but then I've watched Norfolk move there. So, Mr. Attorney, if we wanted to, decided to go with Mr. Meeks' offer or some other service, could we move the monument before July the first if we wanted to? That's a legal question.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, we are, there are some unique situations with regard to each and every city and their current status. The issue Portsmouth has right now before it, there's certainly some actions we've taken from a public safety standpoint. Ultimately, and I will, I've been looking at issues this morning specifically with regard to, is there a means of expediting the matter? And while there have been some discussions, there are probably one outstanding issue that is the most pressing. And I'll just simply say, as we sit here today, there's still a criminal penalty existing under current law as it relates to moving this property around. Things may clear up post-July one, and that's what we're looking at right now. So I would say, as of today, we are probably in a bit of a status quo. July one, we may have some more options and
And that's not that far away.
No, it's not far.
And remember, colleagues, that when we discussed this now several different times, the money was to look at the site, see if what needed to be done at the site. If it doesn't fit at Cedar Grove, will it fit at Oak Grove? What type of foundation is necessary, et cetera? Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alright. Is that you, Nate?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Clark, you have the floor.
Yeah, the only thing I kind of want to echo a couple of things that Councilwoman Simmons said. You know, as going forward with accordance of the law and based on what the attorney just advised us, if it's going to go, if the termination, for example, if the determination is going to go to Oak Grove Cemetery, I would not want to see it moved twice. Moving it once would be the best, in my opinion. And because anywhere that you could store this would be farther away than the distance from its current location to Oak Grove Cemetery. So I think if that's what's determined to be displaced, I think it's more cost-effective to move it once because there's so much other involved, depending on how it's moved with the streetlights and wires and Dominion Power and everybody else. So as it stands now, you know, based on what the attorney told us, legally, we can't do it now. But I'd prefer to do it in one move from its current location to its permanent location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor. Mayor, Bill has one additional question.
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
It's been, it's been said that there are contents within the monument. What will happen to the, how will those contents be kept safe? What will the disposition of them be once they're identified?
Are you talking about the cornerstone of the monument?
I understand there's some artifacts in that cornerstone. Obviously, when the monument's moved, those contents, I take it, will be revealed.
Why wouldn't they move with the monument? Unless, you know, we would want to put them in.
I don't know how the monument's constructed, reference of cornerstone. You know, I don't, I don't think we'll know that before it's moved. The other question is, damage to the monument when it's moved? Do we have any legal authority that the city absolutely owns the monument? I know Judge Moore made the decision, he made a ruling that that it couldn't be, whether the city owns it or not. So if it's, if it's destroyed or damaged in any way, is the city going to be liable in some respects? I guess my question is to the city attorney.
Are you prepared to answer that now or you want to research it?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I will be providing you some updates on those issues, given the current circumstances.
Very good, thanks.
I have one additional comment. And I guess that will be directed at the city attorney. I guess, are there any conflicts of interest with any particular persons in the community, Mr. Meeks, per se, moving the monument? And the second one, who is responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of the monument once it is moved to Cedar Grove or Cedar, wherever our final destination will be?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, with regard to maintenance, as you all are aware, we have, the city has taken up the maintenance issues with regard to the monument. I don't expect that to change. I don't have any reason to believe that would. I don't expect that to change. I don't have any reason to believe that would change. Also, with regard to moving, certainly, there's an issue with regard-
Somebody's breathing really hard. I can't hear. Somebody's got-
If there's an issue or if an issue presents itself with regard to a conflict with regard to how we move this, we will certainly make you aware of that. There, there's none based on what we have in front of us today.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further question? Madam Clark, will you call the vote, please?
Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're now at item 20-162, and it's the consideration of adoption of a certain ordinance. Can you hear me now? I feel like a commercial. And thank you, everybody, for your patience. We're trying a new headset that was supposed to cut back on the feedback. That breathing might deep knee. I might get the guilty party. In fact, if I am, I apologize. That's why I've been putting the mic up. So thank you for your patience. With that, and I'll move the mic closer to my lips, we have the consideration of another ordinance at 20-162. Will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to reappropriate the sum of $3,33,287.77 of the encumbered but unexpendable funds from the FY 2020 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund into the FY 2021 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for our discussion. And Dr. Patton has asked for the floor. Dr. Patton?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, you know, this is the end of the year when our superintendent comes forward to counsel with unexpendable funds. I ask that you read the letter that is affixed to your document dated to the city manager on June 12, 2020, and that explains where Dr. Bracy and the schools are currently. And they will be coming back to us as they get closer, June 30th is seven days away. June 30th is six days away, but into August, they will be coming back for some other considerations for reappropriations. And I think I can, can say this. Seems like I'm getting so much feedback. I'm sure I can say this, that Dr. Bracy and I are working very closely with all of the requirements that are going to be necessary for our schools to have some semblance of opening September 8 of 2020. As I indicated, we have a meeting on Friday, so we are working very closely to try to be as prepared as possible for all of the demands that are coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussions with this motion? All right.
Yes, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. So the $3,33,000 that the school is asking to, for encumbrance, so that's going to go into their school fund, and should they need their, any of that fund at any portion of the time, they send their request through the city attorney to, to get those funds?
No, this, these are, these are, this is money that you all are, are returning to the schools. They have the money now. It's just going to roll over until their 2021 budget that starts July 1. This money, the superintendent is already allocated for computers.
Right.
Things that he needs. Yeah.
Yes.
Nothing coming to us.
Okay, great. We can't hear the mayor. We can't hear you, Mayor.
He's trying to unmute.
Okay.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I can tell you that my computer screen went blank, and it said I'm not in the meeting, and then I rejoined. Any further discussion on the, on the motion? We're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, when your name is called on the voice vote, please indicate by saying aye. If you're opposed, nay. And Madam Clark, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're at item 20-163, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clark, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation of $100 from Garland Abbott III and appropriating said funds to the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to support operations of the Services Intake Unit.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Second. Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to adopt. Any discussion on the motion? Here and done. We're ready for the question. This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Madam Clark, call the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody? Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. And we come to item 20-164, and this is the consideration, the adoption of an ordinance. And Madam Clark, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Just one second.
Sure.
Technical difficulties there. Okay. An ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $3,900 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2021 Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, which is to adopt? This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. If you're opposed, nay. Madam Clark, will you call the roll, please? The vote?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're at item 20-165, which is the consideration, the adoption of another ordinance. Madam Clark, please read the caption of that ordinance, please.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting rent and mortgage relief program funds in the amount of $450,000 from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development and appropriating said funds to the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to provide rent and mortgage relief payments.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second? Any discussion on the motion? This will be a roll call vote. We're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Madam Clark, call the, the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're at new business, item 20-166. Items submitted by council. We have to consider ordinance, protocol wise, as it relates to how we're conducting our meetings. Madam Clark, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance confirming and continuing ordinance 2020 S21 adopted on April 14, 2020, and the emergency procedures established thereunder to ensure the continuity of local government during the COVID-19 pandemic.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Ready for discussion? Any discussion on the motion? Here and done. We're ready for the question. This will be a voice vote done by a roll call. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Madam Clark, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. And this concludes-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Who said that?
Councilman Clark.
Okay. You have the floor, sir.
Yeah, before, before you close the meeting, I have one item I'd like to bring up. Typically, I would have brought this up in a work session, but since we're not having those, I felt like this was the appropriate time to bring it up. Back in February, when we had our retreat, we had a very lengthy discussion about our public safety and their salaries and staffing concerns, which has gotten worse since that time. I know we had requested at that time to find out what a million would get for us, 2 million, 3 million, et cetera. And to this date, I don't think we ever received that information. I know it's in this budget year, 2021 budget, to do a study on the salaries. But if, if, I would like to take a consensus, what I would be proposing is a flat $2,000 increase to the base salaries of our first responders and public safety. This is not a bonus. This would go to their base salary. And I would propose that this would come from our unassigned fund. As the study goes forward, this would just be some funds they would already have that wouldn't have to be allocated at that time. Due to the staffing shortages, we cannot afford to lose any more of our public safety employees that are being taken from us by other localities that are offering bonuses, one-time bonuses to get them. So, you know, the way that our public safety has shown unfortunately takes, it's like 9/11 or the current pandemic, for a lot of the citizens to see what our public safety professionals do on a daily basis. So that would be my recommendation, that we could take the money from the unassigned fund and give a one-time $2,000 flat raise to every public safety employee to help retain the training and knowledge that we have and not lose it to our neighboring cities. Thank you.
Unless you've heard Councilman Clark's proposal, do we know the cost of what this is?
What I would say is, it, it would be, it would be less than a million dollars because even if you use the number of 500, split it for public safety, you decide that would be a million. But we have at least 54 vacancies on the police side, as well as vacancies on the fire side. So I would estimate it'd be around 800, 800 to 840,000.
How about if we do this? How about if we ask the city manager to, I think we all understand your, your proposal, to work up the numbers and bring it back for our next council meeting? Even if you did decide, because that's in July, we can make it retroactive to July 1. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Anybody, anybody in disagreement?
No.
Okay. Good. All right.
Mayor, we, we still under items submitted by the council?
We are. Go ahead, sir.
I've got a few items that I wanted to check the status on. One, one is ensuring the accuracy of our water meters. I'd ask the city manager to come back with a plan on how we can ensure the residential water meters are tested for accuracy periodically. I, I think as the rates increase, that's going to become more critical.
Okay.
Good. And Dr. Patton?
I have it.
All right. Next meeting, Dr. Patton.
Okay. The other, the other item, I'd ask for a, a plan on making some of our communities a golf cart community.
Yes, yes.
And I don't, I got one supporter out there.
Oh, hold on, Mr. Mayor, can I say, Mr. Moody?
Yes.
You have asked that several times, and it was this week that I saw in Sterling Cove on my street. New neighbors have a golf course, and they ride from one person's house to the other. We will have something for you when we come back on the 14th.
Okay, very, very good.
Very good.
Also, the last item, an update on 818 County Street Development. I think it's called Holly Point. How is that coming along?
We will get back on it.
Mayor, I may have some insight on that from my last PRHA meeting.
Okay.
Sure.
Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
Yes, yes. Thank you. I was in attendance at the last PRHA meeting, and they had scheduled to break ground in March, but COVID came upon us. So they have delayed that for a couple of months, so they're waiting for an appropriate time where they could do that. And, and hopefully that will occur in the next 90 days, but they are ready to go forth with the groundbreaking and to begin that new construction. And if I also might add, that the Lexington Place Phase 2 of them demolishing the Lincoln Park community so that they can begin the, the development of Lexington Place, that second part of Phase 2 demolition will occur in October of this year.
Thank you. For every, for everybody's, for everybody's benefit, please identify the development on County Street.
Yes, the development at 818 County Street is a Holly Point. It is workforce development housing. It will be developed by the Wuda Group.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Rolling back the 1% meal tax.
All right.
I've mentioned it for several meetings to you, and we can't seem to get to it.
Well, it, under Robert's rules of order, a member of the prevailing side has got to bring it up. And was that a 4-3 vote?
Yes, I believe so, Mayor.
Is there a member of council that was on the prevailing side wanting to bring this up? Mr. Battle, you're going to have to work on one of your colleagues to, to get this.
Well, they're playing political football. I guess we'll have to wait till after November.
Okay, sir.
Mayor, I have another question for the city manager.
Go ahead.
It, in accordance with Virginia Code, Section 18.2- In accordance with Virginia Code Section 18.2-137, the vandalism that occurred on the Confederate Monument, those are misdemeanors. And have there been any charges issued yet?
Is the state police still continuing? Okay.
Mr. Moody, I cannot answer that at this time, but I've noted your question.
Okay. And also, I'm sure the law enforcement officers that were present, the video cams, have those been made public? Are they going to be part of the investigation? I know we've had some FOIA requests come in. What's the status?
Mayor, Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir. You've got the floor.
Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, to extent, there have been some litany of FOIA requests over the last couple of weeks. And so those are being assembled and responded to in the order that they were received in regard to the amount of work it takes to provide those responses. So there are videotapes, of course, and body cam footage of officers who were out and about. And so they, those are in order. They have been preserved and available for, you know, an appropriate FOIA response or whatever other legal service or public safety concern that might want those videotapes.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for their patience, not only for this meeting, but all the meetings that we've been having virtually. And that's not only to my colleagues, but to the public. And these different, these meetings are different. They're not in the formal setting. They do have an informal look to them because each person's in a different venue. But we have done well to move the city's business forward. One point privilege, the COVID-19 virus continues, and I urge everybody to wear a mask. With that, this meeting is adjourned.